Call the meeting to the board now and we'll start with the flag.
The flag is right behind everyone. The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the minutes reflect that all board members are present in the call and a quorum has been established. So there is no unfinished business, so we will move to new business and we will discuss the pending letter of agreement between the city and the school district with respect to the police liaison officer program. Mr. Black?
Thank you, Chris. Welcome, everybody, to Lincoln Elementary this evening. If you have not been here in a while, our intent towards the end of our agenda will obviously to walk through that building. Thank you, Mr. Delwitz, with your help and support this afternoon to create the moving boardroom here as we prepare for tonight's meeting. So as Chris mentioned, the agreement with the city of New London and the school district of London with our memorandum of understanding for the police school liaison officer agreement is in draft form and was presented for board members to review some prior work that went into this conversation before. I've met with Chief Slater and obviously listening and looking at what we had prior and overwhelmingly the vast majority of this document is the previous MOU in which both parties had recognized. The items in red were brought forward as items of suggested language to strengthen and bring clarity to the agreement itself, particularly in the area of the role description on page nine. Just from our previous work as a board when we were talking about bringing clarity and further processes and understanding and knowing and expectations, numbers 10, 11, and 12 were brought forward for the board to consider with the support of Jim Macy, our school attorney, who has brought some suggestions. He thought those would be items that would support that Chief Slater thought that it made sense as well, those three items and any of the other noted items in red that would support this document. Again, this isn't policy, all right? This is the agreement which acknowledges four years of the commitment between the district and the city, recognizes the monetary amount of approximately 75,000 to support the program as well as the one full-time officer and two part-time officers. And I'd also like to note that officers that take on the role as their full-time responsibility have a four-year cycle and this will be the final year of officer management who's supporting us within the district. And over the summer, as we prepare, we will go through that process to identify who that next full-time individual may be for the district and the city. Chief Leader said that he thought there was some interest in that from his current force, which is makes great sense, somebody very familiar with our district and that can bring forward and keep all of these elements intact for our school community. Were there any comments, suggestions, or feedback on the draft memorandum? If we do move forward with it, we look for potential approval at our June 12 meeting.
I just had an observation. I know you said this isn't policy, but maybe we should make somehow the verbiage match of the role description because here it says they report to police chief, but like in our policy, it says they report to you where you're designated. So I just feel like that could cause some confusion at some point.
Right.
We should make a match.
I agree 100 percent. And Terry actually emailed me earlier today on the process, knowing that our board has directed the policy committee to look at our current policy. With potential approval of this, then we can relate this to whatever policy that comes forward and if we need to adjust it and change it, this would be the accurate document to make sure that we align. I guess that was my intent to bring it forward with that framework. Whatever this states that we agree upon, our policy then, if it rolls into it as appropriate, we could make sure that that matches. Is that what you're thinking as well?
I guess I didn't have any thoughts. I just thought they should match.
Yes.
I know cut before the worst, but it could really cause some confusion.
Absolutely.
And then what about like when we did the mental health screening with Samaritan and then both parties were health harmless? Is there any thought on that?
I believe that's been removed as well, the indemnification piece.
But shouldn't both parties be? I just am curious, like I don't want someone to get in trouble at school and then sue the, or you know what I mean, like that's sue the school. Like I just think that should try to match with the policy as well and I'm not sure we're exactly in the end.
I believe that was the first month I was here when he signed this the first time and I believe that was something that was taken out, that indemnification piece.
So we are health harmless.
We are within that process.
Has this been wrote by our lawyer?
Yes, Jim Macy has, I sent him a copy of this.
Thought it was fine?
He brought forward the items in red to consider, to help strengthen it.
It's just still, there are a couple of statements in here that just seem to be in conflict with each other. If I look at page four, yeah, I'm looking at item seven and this was part of the discussion the policy committee was having when we brought this forward the first time and I believe we asked the policy to be sent to attorney for review, not this document. But we call out the things that we don't want the SRO to deal with, all of many of which are in fact ordinance violations. And then I look at page nine and the description of the officer's job is to impartially enforce the laws of the state of Wisconsin, the ordinance of the city of New London, and investigate any acts that are contrary to them. So how do we do that? Because we've got in the agreement saying you can't do that, his job says that's your job. That was the challenge that Mandy and I were having the first time is how do you decide who's deciding what ordinance are violated, if any? You can't say this is your job, but don't do your job. That's where I've had problems with this. And I understand the challenges of our children being cited on civil offense, but part of that process is supposedly to alert them that you can't do these things because if you do, there's a consequence. And as they get older, that consequence goes up. The other question I had was, we talk about contacting the, and this became particularly a little worrisome to me after the incident in Shawno that was this last week. We talk about notifying the parent of the student who is being dealt with for a discipline problem, but we never talk about is the child who's been the victim of that, if there is one, are we talking to that parent? Because I sure don't want to be where Shawno is right now. And I think if we're going to have that, we should, you know, it's only fair to make sure that if there is a victim in this case and if we're really worried about, you know, the mental state of our kids, that child has much more challenges with mental state than the one who's creating the issue. So I don't know where that fits. Maybe it's in policy. It doesn't necessarily have to be a responsibility of the SRO to do that. I would suggest it probably isn't. It's probably our responsibility.
Right, whether it be our admin, our guidance, or whatever those appropriate staff started to address that.
And maybe that belongs in policy, but all too often I see us worry about the child who's in trouble for whatever reason and we forget the victim. We don't talk very much about those kids. Those kids are the ones that tend to be our at-risk children after the incident. The other, page five, who sets the goals? I agree with the goals and objectives, having them, but who sets them and are they by district or by building?
Paragraph, are you on, Terry?
Pardon? Oh, I'm on page five, Chris.
Page five, paragraph.
I'm on program assessment, item 12. I agree we should have, we have things now, there's an annual report, correct? And it identifies the incidents and by building, but this says to establish goals and objectives? I don't know that I've ever seen those for this. So who sets those? Should we call that out in this memorandum?
We very well could, you know, with the reporting out of the process, it is discussed annually as part of this as well, within what's working well, what's not working well, areas to improve. You know, this year within our key performance indicators, student discipline is one of those elements that we're looking at on there. So it's going to be a natural touch point for us to address this as well during that time for those behavioral incidents. But if we feel the designate or the...
Well, if we're going to establish goals, you pretty much have to have who's going to be responsible to do that.
I think this might relate back to the goals that the chief sets for the SRO because if I'm not mistaken, they have to make, maybe Danielle or Candy can help me with this, they have to make a certain number of presentations every year in the building, correct? Yeah, and so that I would think falls under the category of goals by the chief because it's not, it's related more to the police department if I recall.
And then they report that back in the annual report, dominate proactive presentations they may.
Yeah.
So is that, is that our goal?
Sure. I guess we could look to enhance some clarity in the goal setting process.
I guess that's all I'm looking. When you say that, it's goals and objectives usually is clearly, should be clearly stated out and should be something that's measurable. And then are those at a district level or are they by building?
Sure.
Or both?
Yeah, it says annually assessed, so this is a four-year contract, so you probably don't want to put all four years worth of goals in here, but you want to delegate it.
And.
Maybe it's to the building principal and the SRO to come out with something.
That wasn't so much my question as to who sets them.
Who sets them?
They're set, they're really, they need assessment for the school-wide plan. So they're part of the school-wide plan, the school needs assessment for goals. So for example, when we had an uptick in vaping, when we had an uptick in texting, when photos started coming through on texts, all of those things, when, I think it's number four, where it says that they will become an integrated part of the staff and the culture and the system of the district, that's when they sit in. So when we were looking at developing the cellphone policy at Telleria preschool, they said it as part of that, but it's the goals of, the goals, the ones that are set by Chief Leader, are Chief Leaders, but when it comes down to building accountability, it's set by the principals and their guiding team to set those goals. So another horrible thing, when we have the uptick in suicides or things like that, that sets that. So I think when you look at that, the other policies about how we set our achievement goals, our KPIs, all of those, I think it's going to come from that in our process for our building. Because you wouldn't have the same goals at Sugar Rush as one with the middle school or at Tuckey School compared to this.
So when do those get sent to the board?
They're in the school-wide plan and the needs assessment. They're posted to all parents, all families, every...
So are they noted as SRO as part of this process or is responsible for them?
We have a sign-in for everybody who's part of that review. So all of that is in our S and title binder from the last 20 years. So every time, every review through that. We have not include the SRO if we don't have one that would address them. So if it's just reading and math, we don't always include them. But if you ask every one of the principals which person they're working with, that would be on the agenda of the sign-in for those meetings.
What I'm hearing, Terry, is if there could be some clarity to that process?
Well, I think if that's the process, then I think just footnote it or something, goals are set, you know, annually based on this.
And by like combination of chief's leader and the building principal and current year's goals are on file.
Yeah. I think it just some clarity to the arrangement.
Sure.
And then how have we gotten community feedback? Have we?
Every year through Title I, we put out our school-wide plans. If you look right now on our website, they're posted. It's required to be introduced, not only at our open house, but also at our other things. And so those are our needs assessment based on what we're looking at. Oftentimes people ignore it because they're thinking it's related to math and reading help, but all of your school-wide plans are out there and we ask for feedback through that. We don't necessarily send it out to the community other than putting it on Facebook and say right now, these are our school-wide plans, further information can be found right here.
So we're not asking for feedback, we're telling you what we're doing.
We invite key people as much as we can to our school-wide goal setting and I think with our future KPIs, let that continue to grow. When we've had open sessions where we ask for feedback, we tend to do it on open house because that's where we get a few people to come. So it's one thing that we talked about quite a bit.
Would that be anything like with your parent advisory committee?
It could be, you know, sharing that as another touch point, you know, to share the results, gather the feedback, for ideas as well.
So I think Brian has one just like high school, too, maybe combine efforts of something.
Sure. So I'll look to bring just some refinement to the program assessment of the goal-setting processes, going out with it in draft form with it. Those good feedbacks.
Any other questions or feedback?
Yes.
If not, are we ready to move the agenda? Okay, so we'll move the agenda to board member keyless entry into district facilities. This is one, this was a request to add this to the agenda that came from John and I looked into it and did some research on other boards that do this and I didn't do an exhaustive one throughout the state, but just ones nearby us. Or a while back, I think last June, a lot of attention got put to this issue when Manitowoc School District implemented a program where the board set a motion where everybody on the board was issued keyless entry. They followed it up by referring it to the policy committee and eventually a couple months later developed a policy with a few boundaries on it. I think it's a good thing they, I looked at the reports and whatnot that happened in that meeting where they adopted it. It was all about increasing transparency, increasing the opportunity for board members to interact with staff and to be in the schools and whatnot. I did talk to one of the board members now, it's almost a year later, and they're very happy they did it. It's been a good thing for the community and for them.
So calling John, John probably has looked more into this than me before bringing it up, but...
It's just a general observation, a key point that's come up time and time again. We've been asked why we're not more active presence wise in the buildings and access is a lot of it. I can tell you right now, today, if I came to that door earlier today and I hit the buzzer, wanted to walk in and somebody is in that office that knows me, I'm not getting access to the building. And when we've talked about this, about coming into the buildings and observing, it comes down to, do you want to observe what's really going on or do you want to preset dog employment show?
I find that hard to believe, John, that they wouldn't know who you are.
I guarantee you at least two buildings in the district, if I walked to that door, I'm not...
If you presented your identification and said, I'm John Heidemann, I'm on the Board of Education, that they're not going to let you in the building. At very least, they're probably going to go get the building principal or if it's a vice, if they have a vice principal, just to validate it. I don't see any sense in it. I'm in the buildings a lot and I have no problem following the protocol that's in place to guarantee the safety of everybody in that building. And that is, is that you walk in the front door, you buzz in or whatever you have to do, they let you in the office, I sign in, I get a visitor's badge, I go about my business. When I'm done, I come back to the office, I sign out, and that's very important because if something would happen during the time that I'm in that building, they're going to want to know who's in the building in the event that there has to be some type of a lockdown or whatever, all right? If I just walked in and didn't sign in, they wouldn't know that and miss it. Maybe you can attest to this, what, you know, why you have those security measures in place in each of the buildings, plus just knowing who's in the building. But I disagree with you. They would know, they would know who you are.
Every employee in the district has an access.
You're not an employee.
You're not an employee.
No, you're on the board.
But you're not an employee.
And we've been asked, and not even asked nicely, to be there, to be observed.
Yeah, but you can, if you walked in and said, you know what, I'd like, and if you just come in unannounced, I wouldn't expect, if I just walked in unannounced and said, I want to go walk around the building or I want to go, I want to go stick my nose into somebody, in somebody's classroom, I would expect to be said, be told, you know what, if you'd have called ahead of time and made some arrangements, we could accommodate you, but I don't think it's, but we can do that right now.
That's funny, but actually the entire time, the entire time that I was growing up and I was in school, that was the norm. That was the norm.
How many years ago was that?
At any, at any time, we could expect a board member to just randomly come and just pay a visit. And they probably wouldn't talk to anybody, they'd just observe for a little while and be on their merry way.
I think it's just courtesy that you announce that you're coming. It's just, it's just plain courtesy.
Just a little bit.
And that's why, that's why I, I'm totally against this. Now, I have made a request that we get ID badges that have our name and our pictures on, not access. So when we're in the building, if somebody doesn't know who I am because they've never been to a board meeting or they haven't watched the video and that, and they see me walking down the hall, it's like, oh, there's Mark Grossman, he's a school board member, all right? Right now, I have just a visitor's badge on. I'd like to have something that lets them know who I am.
That actually has become part of their policy at Manitowoc. So they have the access card, but they, their policy says you must wear the ID that you're talking about when you come in.
So do they have to go to the office and then sign in to get one of those IDs?
It's part of their, no, no.
They just have one.
Their issue.
Yeah.
And also, it says during the hours that the office is manned, you should still sign in, you know, you should still...
So what's the difference then? What's the difference of what we're doing right now, other than they're just able to walk into any door and...
I think, I think the community there really like to know that their board members have access. There's times that the buildings are things going on.
Why would I need access to the building?
Well, let me ask you this, why not?
Well, that's, that's not the question. I have no reason that I can't come through a front door and sign in like any other visitor because the reality is I am not an employee of this district. I am a board member. If you file, I can tell you right now, if I went to file for unemployment, this don't work. And we only get paid because as a board, we've chosen to say, as a board member, you are entitled to this salary. I have no contract, I'm not an employee.
Anyway, I don't really want to go back and forth.
You know, with Manitowoc example, Chris?
I just want to give a little bit more data. I did check with the districts around us, there's two of them that have this in place.
Close.
Quinsville and Manawa has adopted it and they're in the process of producing them. They don't actually have it in their pockets.
Did they say why?
No, I was just asking if they did it. I think, I think that the story, the Manitowoc story created quite a bit of discussion in the school community around it. I'm guessing people looked at that and said, oh, that's a good idea.
There's also, there's also a lot mistrust in Manitowoc right now. I've been following that situation over there very closely for the last two years and there's a ton of mistrust.
They've said, they've said this has really added to the trust over the last year that it's...
I think mistrust is what...
It's helped you improve relations between...
What is, what is the difference? I still, I don't buy John's argument at all because I would, I would, if we had an administrative person manning the front desk and he came in the door and they said, we don't know you, we can't let you in, and they didn't say, you know, I'll go get some, our principal or a vice principal, or if they refused to do that, I'd probably have that person dismissed, all right? But I don't think that that's going to happen. And I just think, again, from a, from a safety standpoint, a security standpoint, making sure that we're signed in and then we're signed out, just like anybody else that comes into that building.
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion between three or four of us. Anybody else want to weigh in this?
When those badge, when they're scanned, there's a, there's a trail, right?
Yeah. And the other thing that they do in their policy is they turn them off at 9:00 PM at night and they don't turn them back on until 6:00 AM, just because there's cleaning and things going on in buildings that aren't really going to help them with educational things, you know? So that, and I believe that parts of weekends are, I can't, you know, I can't remember everything they told me.
I can't imagine anybody needing access to a building in the evening or on weekends. If you can't come here while the building's running, if this is all about more engagement and more transparency, then it better be while the building's actually operating and not anytime it's not.
Right. Well, you know, there's, there's activities after school that board members may be invited to, et cetera.
Come through the door.
No, just wait a second with that. Come through the door. No, hang on. There's, there's times my daughter's in basketball and there's times that, you know, we go to pick up and we are stuck outside as parents waiting for kids, whether, there's some parents in there and waving or looking and sometimes they come to the door and sometimes they don't. Doesn't happen so much here, but like when they practice at Parkview, it happens.
But that would only be a benefit for you. It wouldn't be a benefit, then should all the parents have an access?
Well, no, but when a parent says to you, can't you get us in?
I would question how they get in.
But I don't have a key to the building.
How did that, well, some of them, some parents wait not very well. I don't know, Joe, like in Lincoln, I haven't seen many parents sit here and wait, but like in Parkview, I mean, I sat and waited for my daughter while she did basketball.
Well, and this, this isn't a big reason to do it, but I'm a member of the FFA alumni and a couple of times I got there and Crystal's running late and there's, all these members are sitting, are standing outside the building waiting to get in the door.
But you shouldn't be the person letting them in.
Well, if I had a key, I'd let them in because it is a scheduled school activity.
You know, all we're talking about so far, all I've heard is it's a slight inconvenience for me that I don't get into the building when I want to be in there. When the buildings are running, the offices are manned, people have a buzzer to buzz you in, you say what you want to do, they let you in the front door, you sign in, you get a visitor pass and you're in the building. I don't see why we have to have a visitor, a key that somebody else has to turn off every night because we shouldn't be in there.
It's programmed into it.
It is programmed in.
Please.
I just want to make one comment. So, and I'm going to relate this to my work because at Tyson, we have turnstiles, you need a key to get through them. When we have upper people from corporate come to our plant, guess what they have to do?
Sign in.
They have to sign in and they have to wait for someone from management to come up there and get them and walk them into the plant. And when they leave, we have to walk with them out and they have to sign out and then they're out for the day. They don't have a magic key to get into any of the plants. I don't think there's a horse and pony show going on where all of a sudden the teachers are going to be like, Mandy's coming to the, Mandy is going to be at our, at our school today. We got to put on a good show for her. I don't think that's going on. I don't see any reason whatsoever with changing anything we're doing. Signing in and out is the best practice. If there's, if people are, if we're getting evacuated for fires, lockdowns, anything like that, they need to know who is in the building.
I appreciate the conversations from every angle here, like leaning on what we've been trained on, because all of you are all...
I guess leading on what we've been trained on, because all of you are all welcome and I think you all know that. And if there's ever been a chance where you haven't been able to get into the building for whatever the reason, I apologize because somebody should have helped you or found a way for you to get in to see or do or communicate with whatever your intent was. But unfortunately, society has dictated over the past several years that, you know, this memorandum of understanding that we're just talking about with the London Police Department and the processes, we are so accountable, whether it's a guest visitor, an employee, school board member, when they come in. Heck, I've even been in drills where they randomly hide someone, you know, to ensure that we're following their protocol, to see that we're checking spaces and we're cross referencing this person down on the list, but why aren't they there? Well, they didn't sign in and all of a sudden there they are. Where did we break them? Where did we have that failure at that point in time? So it is, what people are saying, it is super important that we follow that program for the, for the what if.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And if there are ways that we can enhance that to meet the needs of the board at a greater level for wanting to come in, I'm open to that conversation and what that looks like within that. But really, anything entering anything building is with that safety intent. We have nothing to hide, you know, with that.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I kind of like the idea because anything that adds to transparency adds to community trust and whatnot. But it's not, it's not an issue that I'm thinking if we don't do it, we're going to be in.
Chris, how would you see this adding to transparency?
Yeah, that's my question. How do you see this adding to transparency?
The idea that board members can't.
Or trust.
Yeah.
Because I trust the teacher, I trust the staff.
Yeah.
So are they going to trust us more if we have a key?
I'm just telling you what these board members there have, have said, that it has, it has added transparency. The community feels better like their elected representatives have access. You know, it's kind of a subtle thing, I think, but does anybody want?
If we're at that stage, we're already in a lot of trouble.
Yeah, that's right, because that's what was going on in Manitowoc. People were worried about what was going on inside the school walls and they wanted the superintendent, they wanted the school board members to go in there and investigate. That's why they booted their superintendent, got a new superintendent, had a whole rollover of their, of their board and, and I think they also got rid of their curriculum manager too. That was not, that's not a pleasant situation over there. Unfortunately, you've chosen, in my mind, a bad example, Chris, sorry.
Well, it's, it's the one that pops up.
I guess I would go back to, I don't believe I, nor do I believe any one of us has any more rights than a citizen when it comes to entering our buildings. If, if we can't follow that same protocol, if I'm a little inconvenienced, I don't have a problem sitting outside until somebody comes and buzzes me in. Every time I enter one of our buildings, I sign through and I have no problem wearing the visitor badge, badge if you want to give me a board badge, who cares? I don't, you know, give it a new color, who cares? But I think the safety involved and we're not above anybody else, we're just a citizen when we're visiting our, our buildings. We're not an employee. We're a visitor.
Even our staff workers don't have access into the building. They have to come, they have to go through the sign in and, and they're employees, they get paid.
I can tell you, I'll go back 20 years ago, the support staff didn't have a key to get in the building.
So is anybody interested in making a motion one way or the other on this or?
Sounds like half the board's dead, dead set against it. It doesn't matter to me, just without access, you don't.
Round it up, do it.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I'm, you know, I'm open to a motion if you want to, if you want to do it.
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? No second, okay. Motion dies for lack of a second. All right, we're moving on then to the WSB Summer Leadership Institute.
Support members, in your material this evening is a, I believe a copy that you may have received that your home residents emailed to you as well. The Summer Leadership Institute this year, if you remember, was in La Crosse last year. This year it's in Green Bay, a little more convenient far as proximity wise. But Chris and I included this as a point of reference when we look at our board norms and continuing our professional growth as an organization, as an opportunity. And Chris, do you want to talk a little bit about what your insight was on the perspective?
Well, I think this is a very good opportunity. It's close. Last year I was in La Crosse, so I think I was the only one that went and took the journey there. Definitely was worth, worth the journey. The program has expanded a little bit this year into a two-day program. This used to begin on Friday evenings and carry over to all days Saturday. Now it begins Friday mornings. There's a, there's a few good situations here that I think would be especially good to take in. School finance is a particularly difficult subject to grasp, how the state formula works. Probably the best guy in the state to explain that is Roger Price, Joe knows that. And he is, he is going to be one of the main presenters at that on Saturday morning. Fundamentals of School Finance, that's really become a big topic with the biennial budget. He has a way of explaining it that far better than any other seminar that I've ever been in on school finance. The other, the other person, Dan Ross Miller, the WSB Government Relations Director, a lot of spotlight on that, again, because of the biennial budget going on. He is going to give a talk on Saturday afternoon and we have the added advantage of the fact that he is, he has been selected to be the next WSB Executive Director. So he's also the one that kind of adopted our resolution that we started here and helped steer it through the committee and through the WSB at the convention. So I think he's, he's always gives a very insightful thing about what's going on in Madison and Washington. So those are two that I highly recommend. There's one at 11:15 on Saturday where the main presenter includes a guiding Dan Neerad. Not so much, it might be good to see what it, what it's saying, but I don't, I don't agree with this, this person at all. He pushes equity rather than equal opportunity in the schools. I've gone to his seminars just to see what he's saying so I can explain why it's not a good direction for education. But there's, there's other ones that look to be interesting and would definitely, definitely recommend this. I always learn just as much in between the sessions as I do in the sessions, I think, because you will meet board members from all over and there's plenty of opportunities over meals and breaks and such to, to meet them and find out what's going on in their districts. Anything we'd like to add, Scott?
Now, just if you are interested in attending, just contact District Office and Joe and I will get you registered up with registration or accommodations that are needed for it at your convenience. For those of you that have attended the WSB conference down in Milwaukee, over the years, this is a smaller version basically, you know, with some breakout session, but ran very similarly within that. Chris is right, the networking that goes on is, it's a great opportunity to talk to people formally and formally with what's going on in education and to grow our skill side as community leaders as well.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we're ready to take on the walking tour of Lincoln, Illinois.
All right, before we get up and move around, just give you a little overview of what we want to take in tonight with Mr. Delwich, our principal here at Lincoln, Illinois Elementary, as well as Mr. Mark Ward, our Director of Business. And we're going to highlight some of the items which we have addressed over the past several years and as well point out some potential projects that we are looking at moving forward. Terry, you could talk all night on this building. Could you give just a brief overview for the board members on what this building is?
Well, the building replaced old Lincoln School, which started out as a high school, was three stories, tore the roof off at some point in time. Most of the community thought it was a brick building. Lincoln was actually a wooden building with a brick facade. When it was torn down, it was 100 years old. It was replaced by this building in 1993 and it was, architects on it were Bray, who happened to also be the architects on the high school approximately five years later. The old building stood right outside this door, literally that far apart from this building. Unfortunately, you talked about an inconvenience, the kids that went here, and there were 300 and some kids going to school at that time, their playground was basically a construction site, so they were quite limited on what they could do. We purchased the property, there was a street that ran through here that we purchased and closed off, purchased the houses on the other side to give more space. And it was an interesting process when they tore the building down because literally they were that far away from this brand-new building and dropping a two-story building into a hole. And I do believe the boiler is still buried somewhere over there. It didn't work. The building actually was forced more upon the district because it was cited by the DPI for being unsafe. We had a second floor with dead, dead-end exits, there were no ways out of the building. If you were in the corridor, there was a fire because they tore the third story off and that time they took down the outside fire escape. Bathrooms didn't have hot water. We're setting, right over here was the gym, it used to flood every time it rained. It was about a third the size of the gym setting behind us. It flooded because of the outdoor exit. We had to feed 300 kids through that gym in 30 minutes and if you brought a cold lunch, you sat in a classroom on the floor that wasn't room for kids. Classrooms had 12 rooms.
It's come a long way since then and it'll be celebrating 30 years with this building.
30 years.
This September. So very proud of what we have and Joe, should we start in the gymnasium?
Yeah, maybe before we walk around, I just wanted to say a couple things. In 2018, when the referendum was passed for that $30 million, this was the first big project that was completed.
Correct.
From those funds, so $650,000 was for roofs. We also did LED lighting here, so that's why those lights may look a little different than what you might see in a traditional light. Also, you walk around and you can see some sinks have been updated into shades now because you may lose the ability to really hear if you walk around. Also ironically, IEI was the general contractor on this building, who was also the general contractor to make the Sugarbush work as summer, so we don't have to care.
Yeah.
This building is also 58,000 square feet. In comparison, it's a little smaller than Parkview, but that's the square footage. This is our secondary elementary school, Sugarbush, and Great Field are smaller.
We'll start in the gym, we'll just stay on the first level, go upstairs, circle around and then finish back here. So Joe, let's take us up to the boiler room.
Okay, we are ready to go into the proposed closed session. Pursuant to Section 19.851(c), Wisconsin statutes, the Board of Education will convene in closed session to discuss continued employment of certified and support staff members over which the board has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility. And then pursuant to Section 19.851(c), also, the Board of Education will convene in closed session to discuss the employment and compensation of administrative, certified, support and summer school staff members over which the board has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility. Open to a motion to go into closed session for those reasons.
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Mark.
I'll say it.
Seconded by Holly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we knew it.
Mark Grossman.
Yes.
John Heidemann. Holly Schweitzer.
Yes.
Terry Weiner.
Yes.
Mandy Lewis.
Yes.
Chris Hartson.
Yes.
Katie Patton. Yes. 719.
719, we are now in closed session.
We'll move on to the music room.